Today, February eighteenth. I'm Tyler Ward. We have Bill Kennedy and Bill Taylor, fellow select board members, Nicole McStay, town administrator, and Justine Hanson, our administrative assistant is taking notes this evening. Assisted by A I as well. Well, however you want to look at that. Uh, we're gonna have a public hearing this evening on um some, just some modifications to the recreation facility rules and regulations. And then we have Michelle Stahl and Ray Walker here to discuss our um, well, look at us, we're at our semi-Quinn centennial. So we're gonna discuss that. Anybody watching knows what that is, so, or doesn't know, they'll find out momentarily. If they're not watching, sorry, nobody's watching me.
Okay, the light's not working on us?
Uh, minutes to approve from February fourth. And then at five thirty, there's the uh budget committee will join us and get a wrap up and kind of a summary of our budget for twenty twenty-six. Excellent. With that, Craig Thali is here, Department of Recreation.
Make a motion to a little homophobic.
Right, I'd make that motion to open a public hearing. All those in there?
Thank you. This is a good spot.
Great.
Um, excellent. I just want to um talk about cutting bonds specifically. Um, the recreation department's interested in increasing the non-resident rate for the beach season pass sticker, uh which we sell a hundred of to non-residents. Uh, it was last year a hundred and fifty dollars. We sold out in two weeks. And I'd like to generate a little more revenue out of that because it's at no cost to taxpayers and still use it at their regular, you know, free for the first sticker and then ten dollars for the extra sticker. Um, but I'd like to go to one eighty-five for each vehicle um for the non-resident sticker. And see, I have a strong feeling that we'll sell out of those just as quickly. Yeah, that's my proposal.
Nice question.
If you could just take your name.
Okay, yeah. My name is Randy Herman. Welcome, brother. And um, so when you sell these passes, um, like I get a pass, and the way it was last year, I had two guest passes that I could give out every day. And I could buy us another pass for fifteen dollars. Is the way it was set up last year. You weren't yet. Okay, forget a little bit. Okay. So when you buy one of these passes as an out-of-town, are you able to give out guest passes too now? No? Okay.
The guest passes can pay for the the twenty-dollar each vehicle per day. Then we'd do twenty of those a day. Uh, so if they have a guest that comes from out of town, they can pay for that. But we don't give them, we'll send them to the residents here.
Okay.
And maybe also the seven dollar in our kayak.
Oh, yes, sorry. No, I love that. Um, yeah, our our kayaks are a bit of disrepair. Um, I, we had the same program where I was before here, and uh we increased it by a couple bucks just to help with replacing of the equipment and kayaks, because they do, they take a beating. Uh, people don't treat those boats like you would treat your own boat, so uh we do have to filter those out and buy new ones. So they last, their shelf life is about five years before they have to get replaced again, so. And a lot of our boats are coming up on that. So I'd just like to generate a little more revenue there to help aim for the program.
Seems, or anyone else have any questions about that?
Yes. Yeah, I'm on it. Sure, it's what I came for. Okay, anyways, I would like to see the town go back to the way it was, where we don't sell passes. And it's for the residents of Peterborough. That was the intent from Ms. Thomas, when she gave it to us. And that was, she stated it again in two thousand and fifteen in article in Making Magazine. And when I was talking to her about a year, year and a half ago, I mean, it's the only thing you'd get for being a resident of Peterborough is that wonderful pond. And I would like to see it go back to being for residents of Peterborough. I think it's a selling point for the town like that, so. And with the passes, I don't know, has anybody ever looked at what kind of use we get out of them? I mean, if we sell a hundred passes, do we on average get twenty people a day showing up? You know, what kind of use are we getting out of these things?
I can, I can say that um tracking wasn't done very well in the past. That is something that we are going to put in place. Um, so we really don't have that data. I, I can tell you that, I mean, I've been a resident here for twenty years, and I've never seen that parking lot full or that pond full. And I think that's where um the kind of history of it is, that the record department looked at and said, you know, the pond, there's, there's room for more people. And if we sell a few passes out of town and help pay for uh the expenses of the pond, then, then that can be a win-win for both.
Um, so. See, I don't see it as a win-win for residents, you know, and when Ms. Thomas said that she gave it to the town, and oh, by the way, too, I wanted to say that, as I understand it, I guess the Petersons helped out too, because they were kind of high in land before she bought it, and they chipped in right away, even though they were, didn't get the land. They did some things to help out. So it wasn't, you know. And um, I understand money's cut and stuff, but like I say, it's, the behavior up there has gotten atrocious. I mean, I go there almost every day in the morning, because it gets too busy in the afternoon. And, you know, the fact that we had to take down lifeguard chairs, because people were throwing them in the water. People are throwing logs in the water. People are throwing garbage in the changing rooms on occasion. And I don't think people even know who's from Peterborough there, because I would expect if Peterborough, you know, if their majority was Peterborough, they would stand up and say, you know, please don't do that or something. I, I think, you know, I think it's a good community center there, but that's, you know, and I'd be glad to come down and talk to you. I don't wanna take everybody's time up here or something.
Sure, those are, those are very valid concerns and um, you know, being this shared.
Right, yeah.
I, there are some changes that we'd like to start there. This is, this is one of them. Um, but, yeah.
Because, I mean, there's, I don't know. I mean, it's just, I, I don't know. There just seems to be an awful lot of people there. You used to be able to, during the day, say you went up at one in the afternoon, you want to swim back and forth. Now there's so many boats out there with people, and they don't care. And they're dragging fish lines behind them and stuff, and, you know, it's all I can ever think about is that um old cartoon you said, you know, I paid my four guests to see a high diving show, and I'm gonna see a high diving show. And I think people come in, they pay their money, and they're gonna do whatever they want. That's pretty much my experience with tourism. Spent a few years in a ski town, and that was pretty much everybody's attitude that came into that town was, you pay their money, you're gonna do what you want to do. And um, I'm just kind of concerned about it as um, you know, as the future of Peterborough go ahead there, so. I guess that's all I really got to say.
Thanks, Ray. Um, those are valid concerns, of course, like Craig said, and certainly something you'll monitor and pay attention to. I don't think we're gonna change that right now. We will focus on just a few price changes. Yeah. And, and quite frankly, it's hard to say who those perpetrators are of the, of the neglect and the the animalism or whatever may be happening. Certainly, we're not immune to that kind of thing in our town. So uh, yeah. Well, you like this. But yeah, thanks, Brett. Thanks for coming out, too. Nice to see you. Uh, anyone else? Any motions, changes, few please?
I will make that motion.
All those in there?
Thanks, Ray. Thank you.
All right, next, we have Lorraine and Michelle. Yeah. Okay, second. Yeah, sure. Everybody, like, I mean, the camera will catch you comfortable there and you'll see, that's fine.
I'd rather stay.
That's fine.
Uh, so I'm Michelle Stahl, the director of the Manak Center in Stream Culture. It's a remain Walker, who is our um program director. All this here. So as you know, twenty twenty-six marks the two thousand and fiftieth anniversary of founding the town. And it seems that like nineteen seventy-six, like nineteen twenty-six, that the town should be marking it in some fashion. Um, and we have ideas about things we would like to do next year. Um, but we wanted to know what's the town, the town's plan for that anniversary?
What's the town's plan? The town stepped up on us, didn't it?
Yeah, we haven't discussed it.
We haven't, we haven't discussed it. I hadn't thought about it until we got your request to commit. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I kind of suspected that. Um, the other thing that I just want to share with you is that while we plan a year-long set of activities, we're also going to be reaching out to the community. We're probably holding a sort of a brainstorming session uh with people from all different parts of the community invited to see what the community really wants. Um, so I will send that information to you, because I think it would be important for the town to be that have that. Um, it's gonna be on Saturday morning, hour and a half. Um, we really don't see our role as being the maker of everything. We have our, because we don't see our role as being the one entity that's gonna drive everything. We don't really have the capacity for that. But we do want to convene a community discussion and also be maybe somewhat a clearinghouse for different kinds of activities that different organizations, schools, so that people know what's going on throughout the year and keep celebrating it rather than just sort of a Monday, July fourth. And then finally, we're hoping that in the course of all of this, that the town will look at um the patriotic community funds to see if there might be some funding that could support some things. Because it's hard for the community to get things off the ground without a little bit of cash.
Sure.
Um, so knowing that in the past years, I think we all know that Jim Grant would have been on this for about eight years now.
Oh, really?
And there'd be like a community of thirty-five people working on it. But he's not here to do that for us anymore. Um, but uh I know that those funds were intended for these kinds of things. So I hope that we could, uh, as teacher did, look at that as well. And that's it.
That's great. And uh, it's, it's probably obvious, but I'm sure the Manak Center has the whole documentation of what happened in seventy-six, right, in our most recent celebration of the source, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Ideas can be pulled from that possibly and.
Yeah. It appears that in seventy-six and twenty-six, um, things were really centered around July fourth itself with a parade.
Yeah.
Um, we are not in a parade business. That's, that's something that we can't take on. If you're trying to watch our parade, we'd certainly be contributors and supportive of it, but we can't. We just, we just don't have the capacity to do that as, as the driver.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know who puts on great parades? Anybody? Macy's? No, they're beyond the arts. They, they go bang up. And who's better to present our two thousand and fiftieth anniversary than kids, right? Let's get the kids, let's get the kids to do it. Any questions?
Do you have connections with children of the arts at all? Have you talked to those folks?
We came to you first. The convening session, which we're planning on doing at the end of March, we're gonna be inviting all, all of the stakeholders. Downtown businesses, community organizations, other cultural organizations, Girl Scout, Boy Scouts, everybody, everybody who might have an interest in being part of this and helping to shape it.
You know, library is really good about organizing the events as well, so. I would talk with.
Trust me, we have enormous lists. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good thing, little thank you for reminding us and getting us thinking about it.
We do have funds in the, in the budget. Proposed funds for patriotic purposes.
Don't take them out.
I'm trying to think, because I was gonna do that.
When might we be able to find out how much money is there?
Oh, that's a good question.
So right now, we're currently working on the F Y twenty-six um budget. Uh, we have a budget overview tonight, actually, ahead of a public hearing in a couple of weeks. Um, and that's the period that runs through June, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. Um, right now, I don't have communication. Eh, I know. It's in my budget, I know. I was just trying to zoom in a little bit. So right now, we have ten thousand dollars currently appropriated, and that's usually about enough to cover our Veterans Memorial Day efforts. Um, you know, where we'd be talking about the twenty twenty-six, we could put money into our F Y twenty-seven budget. Uh, so that would be available after July one of twenty twenty-six to cover any contracts or anything that we might have. I also know that there are some trust funds that are available for general purposes, uh like this one. Um, Lily, I don't know if you remember the name off the top of your head.
Peterborough General.
It is just the general.
Is that, and I think it's only about seventy-six hundred dollars in there.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of money in there that we could start working with as well that's available anytime. Um, the selectmen just have to decide how to designate it. Um, and then there's a few other things that we could, we could certainly discuss.
Pretty, I would be planning on looking at spending money starting January one through June thirtieth next year?
Um, it really depends on how things shape up, but to not have money available until July first for something that's gonna happen on July fourth, for example, it's not gonna work out.
And, and you know, without, without us knowing how much money we might need, that's gonna be a bit of a challenge. Whereas the, the budget for it now, it's, it's probably annual budgeting. So I'm not really sure how, how we really can, you know.
In some ways, we're already a little late to the game, because a lot of these enactments and stuff like that, we have to come way in advance.
Oh, yeah.
And I don't know if they're gonna require, they just don't require it even a month or not, so it would have to be within this budget.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and again, without knowing how much to put in, I don't know. Maybe come up with something in the next two weeks, you know, then. As far as an idea, we would maybe be able to make an amendment at the budget at the public hearing in March. Um.
Well, can I ask you, um, so did you say that the ten thousand dollars is earmarked for the memorial thing of Veterans Day?
Correct.
What do you spend five thousand dollars on?
Uh, that's for the band. Most of it is for the, you know, getting the, the band, but also supplies, replacing flags, um memorials, gravestone markers, that sort of thing. Most of it is to that.
And do you spend fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, most, almost all of that, yeah.
Well, last year we spent eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-five thousand. I think that it would, you should say that we would need ten thousand.
Something the select board can consider as we were to get a budget this evening.
Where do we take it from? Should we, should we double the amount of uh coming in pond? Yeah, the cameras.
Would that be ten thousand for the whole year, so five thousand in F Y twenty-six budget and five thousand in F Y twenty-seven budget? Um, no, I think that we need ten thousand for July fourth. We can't spend it after July first.
Yep.
So whatever is allocated for January to June.
Has to be spent before, right?
Then yeah, I guess so.
Word of it is a donation to the, to the historical society. Would we word it that way?
That would be kind of, I mean, just in support of what they're here to talk about.
I think we can make an appropriation like that. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to.
Then we could spend it before.
As a, or working into the budget. Wouldn't be dissimilar from how we do the patriotic purposes anyways. Because that, that ends going to the Cheney Armstrong post. Yeah, we could do that.
Well, I think that would be, it would be great. Um, I don't, if it has to go to a one article, I don't think that's a good idea. Because I think people would be looking at that like, why are we giving ten thousand dollars to the Manak Center? Um, we, we don't need that kind of.
I don't, I don't see how that could possibly be bad publicity to be planning to celebrate America's two hundred and fiftieth birthday, so.
Um, depending how much complaining I hear about your property taxes. It'd be nervous.
Well, we're not here to discuss that, hardly, but thank you for bringing it up.
Well, this, this is, this is great. I'm lively supporter of what we're trying to do here, but um, and I'd love your creative ideas about how to help get some funding. We don't want to put a burden on the town. We want to work with you.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, our, our budget year is challenging to do a project like this.
Yeah.
It always is, yeah.
Yeah. And just, uh, just FYI for you, um, part of the reason that we sort of held off on planning for this is that we were, you know, hoping that there would be funding coming through National Order for Humanity and bring down to the country and that it's help fund things. And uh, that's just not gonna happen.
Why, why wouldn't that happen?
So, yeah. Well, even in the previous administration, it was clear that it was, there wasn't a lot of appetite for funding this stuff, so. Um, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you.
And then we have a slew of expenditures to the.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I'd make a motion that we approve those, John. Twenty-four, twenty-four.
Oh, I made, oh, I made a second, a second did that motion.
Well, Billy, you need to recede yourself.
Oh, you weren't there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Well, I was there for the beginning of the actual meeting.
That's true.
I'll make a motion to approve this. That's not part of the, oh, oh, sorry. All right, all right, great. Now the expenditures, right?
Yes.
Brief overview, or we've discussed these already?
I think you've discussed all of them already at one point or another. Um, the, the one that's most interesting to you probably is the very first one. Um, and it looks like these gentlemen are here to, to provide some illumination on that.
I don't know that we actually need it. They probably have to have the funds to order the stuff.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, we're just taking the order now to save some price increases. Um, and do now the vendor will hold it. Uh, the inventory there and deliver it to new stations while the guy people move into our station here.
And then the rest of them, um, the request for expansion for our district is the regular budget announced for administration of this district. Um, the water department, we have some funds there that will help us with the, the tiny tank work. Um, and then the last one, the roadway systems, some of them work on Pine Street. We really just wanna basically get the mon, get the approval for the money ahead of time. Um, that way we're not constantly coming back to you with needing a little bit more, needing a little bit more. We just want to get the project done. You're certainly not the only one.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we approve all of them. All of them.
Really having your reading, okay, second, second, sure, all right. All those in there? Great. Um, I just wanted to say that Chief Walker, John, Eddie, Brad, that um your presentation at the budget committee last week, last time, um, I received great feedback about the information you guys shared and the breakdown of the ambulance service and what everything costs. And um, as detailed as it was, uh, it was very helpful, the people, people really getting in. I, I heard of them several people, so I want to commend you on that work and you presenting that importance of, you know, that program and how we're gonna fund it and all that, so. I wanted to get that out. All right, um, we have five minutes before our budget committee. Any, any other information to share with anybody on that? Short recess, more Simon's thing.
Uh, no. It's like thirty percent, I think, or not. Yeah.
Looks like three times eight.
It is about the least expensive paper there is.
Yeah, probably a brand new statement.
Oh, look at that, it's five thirty. All right. Welcome back, everybody. Glad you're here with us. Uh, I'm gonna hand the rest of the meeting.
And request your chair and the budget committee to introduce everybody.
Thanks. Thanks, Tyler. Tonight, for the budget committee, we have Tony Casal and Dave Abin, who are close to the way to there. And then Al Leno, Barry Plon, Dick Brown, Tom Habsino, Leslie Lewis, and myself, Melissa Dunn. Hopefully, that'll stop a few minutes. I know we turn a little late sometimes. But I think we're ready to get going. Um, did we want to do some open business? I, I, like I said, I didn't see any minutes. Like we had a fairly lengthy meeting last time, but we're all right.
So I'll get this out to you.
Okay, then we can, we can have a program next time around. Okay, and uh, so I might just turn this over to Nicole and start talking about what we have to talk about.
Sure, yeah. Um, so we'll start very briefly um with the review of the proposed budget. Um, what I'm really looking forward is to hear any questions regarding the budget that we've presented so far. And then we'll do a review of the draft, tell me any more.
I guess before we get started, actually, uh, we were talking about uh the budget formation responsibility to present the tax impact of the budget to the community, and we thought that might be appropriate to do that in an April eight present meeting?
Yes, a global session, yeah.
So we schedule that as part of that session?
Absolutely.
Can we also open this, do the business, if something have to go against this?
So, I, I truly only have a handful of slides here. I'm not gonna go very much into depth into the budget, since you've already heard it at some length. Um, but the total proposed to be raised through taxation is up by nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Nine hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and ninety-one of that, which is obviously more than the number I just gave you, is for the fire station bond payment, which is now part of the operating budget. The balance of the operating budget has decreased by eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. So if, but for the debt service increase, we would be looking at um below zero. Cost drivers in our proposed whole budget this year, obviously, the debt service is number one. Um, health insurance for you to go up ten and a half percent, work for. Um, health insurance pre used to go up ten and a half percent, work recompensation went up twelve percent, property liability up nine percent, unemployment down ten percent. Um, and most of our commodities, um, are level or down. Um, most of the insurance, if you, if you're looking for those numbers, you'll find them on the finance department's budget. Cost of living and merit, this is spread out across all the budgets that have staff in them, which is virtually all of them. Um, our cost of living is proposed to be two percent and our merit increase is a maximum of two percent. Uh, the Northeast, we, we refer to the Northeast CPI, um, and the Social Security CPI to get us there, um, as well as, uh, spoke with other towns, most of the other towns, particularly in our area, are ahead of us in the budget process because they are not fiscal year budgets, they're calendar years, so we already know what they're looking at for their average increases. And retirement system, police is actually down point three-three percent, fires down one point two percent, and employees, which is everybody else, is down point seven-eight percent, which is kind of amazing. Um, usually we see more significant increases than that, so it's a nice change of pace. And that's really all I have. Um, as far as the budget, are there any, looking now to the Budget Committee and the Select Board, did you have any thoughts? Um, or concerns before we move forward with sending the proposed budget to the public hearing?
Because I do have a thought. Uh, first of all, I expect fully to endorse the budget as we have seen it. I think the, uh, the town's gone through a very rough administration and the budget in general is as good as it can be. Uh, but I do have a concern because the biggest issue that we identified this year, biggest issue of concern was the funding of the ambulance service. Uh, our Select Board Chair Tyler did thank Chief Barker for his presentation last week, and I agree that it was a very good review of the situation. However, we had heard, uh, prior to the meeting that there was supposed to be a review of the alternatives to the, uh, proposal that we were seeing for funding the ambulance service. Uh, after the presentation, we were told that that review was held, but it was held, uh, in a, um, meeting that was closed to the public. And that a decision was made here by the, uh, Select Board as to, uh, which of the alternatives they would like. I understand our good reasons for, uh, holding private sessions. I do not understand how it can be the case that, that reviewing the alternatives to the ambulance service should be held in a private session. There may be other things in that session, I do not see how that topic could have been done, uh, without presenting it to the public and particularly to the, uh, Budget Committee. So I know enough about the ambulance service from the mayor using that, that I can accept the decisions that were made. But I do think that when we have a discussion about the alternatives, it's important for the Budget Committee to be participating as well. I'm concerned about the whole of the Budget Committee because our primary job is not to sit in here and listen. It's to interact with the public, to endorse decisions that we are taking. And I think we've been hampered in that in this case because we weren't able to hear what the issues were, or discuss anything about it in private session. So I'm not asking for action, I'm just telling you what my position is on that.
You want to make a comment?
Just, I agree with what the Congress is saying.
Another question I have, were there in fact alternatives, uh, put forward? That were reviewed and considered in comparison to what was put in the budget?
If you would like me to, I can.
I'd prefer you didn't.
Was it one, two, five, maybe?
We had, we had a number of alternatives, um, it's really more along the lines of specifically having to deal with the level of service that we've, would be provided and the consequences of changing that level of service because really that's the only way you can get cost savings. The other option that was considered, um, was also the transfer service, um, and the complications that there would be bringing that back. Um, and other implications that there would, that were involved in bringing that back. These conversations were, uh, the decision to hold the conversation in non-public is because there's a lot of personnel matters connected to all those things. Um, there are also interests that outside entities have in any of those, uh, conversations, and so decided that it made the best sense to hold the whole meet. That portion, particularly that portion of the meeting, but really that conversation kind of was spread out across the entire meeting, so it made sense to keep all of that in non-public.
So this group of committees asked to defer to where you landed on any of all of those considerations?
Right.
It's, it's the board, it was the board's decision to make.
So I just would add to that, in open, that when it comes to public meetings, when it comes to Budget Committee's presentation, whatever it might be, Budget Committee is not in a position to address any of the decision points that would be, uh, we're about to defer to this.
And I would echo the last few comments, um, I just don't think it would have been that difficult to, as part of that presentation to say, oh, there are, uh, alternatives were discussed and, you know, this is what we feel going forward is the best decision. We just felt like, again, we were a little bit sidelined in that whole discussion, so, again, I echo Carl said, you know, it was an excellent presentation and it certainly sounds like that was the best decision, but we would have uh, liked, a little more liked to have been shown in that whole process.
Uh, I will share that it, it, as long as I've been involved with government, it, it has been frustrating in, uh, the way New Hampshire has their, um, RSC ninety-one A and, and, uh, you know, right to know law, but the discussion of personnel and, and matters, there are a lot of things that we just can't.
Right, we don't need to know any of that, I agree, just the fact that it happened.
That's all we were looking for. It was such an integrated discussion, the whole, you know, the whole presentation, that would have been difficult to separate any of that stuff out, and so. And, and I will tell you that I really, personally, I really felt that there, what we came down to was the best option for everybody, all stakeholders, and I, you know, it's a lot, a lot of money, but we, we take care of a lot of, we're, we're all our neighbors, we're, we're all thinking here each other's, so, um, that's where I stay with it. But I, I really appreciate where you're coming from, I co, totally understand.
I'd also support what, um, Carl and others have said, and I understand fully the reasons for closing the session. Is there a regulation or a, something that prevents Budget Committee from sitting in on such a session, I'm talking future practice?
No, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything that would prevent it except that we'd have, I mean, personnel matters. It's something I would really want to talk to town, turn me about first, to make sure I understand what the limitations are before. Yeah, I think it, I think it would really depend on, on what had to be discussed. Some particular personnel matters really are only for the Select Board, yeah.
Great, thank you.
That was it for the budget? Alright, that's Warren, so you all have.
Lily?
Yep, may I ask a question?
Based on, um, Michelle Stahl's presentation, is there a consideration to place ten thousand dollars in addition to what the numbers are? Um, not everybody was here for her presentation.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, yeah, the, um, Michelle Stahl and, uh, Lorraine Bishop from the.
Walker.
Walker, sorry, Walker from the Manok Center for History and Culture met with a selectman, uh, at about five thirty, uh, to talk about raising funds for the United States semis. Seventy twenty ten, yeah, thank you. Uh, celebration, which will be taking place, uh, in July of twenty twenty-six. As you can imagine, uh, having a celebration taking place on or around July of twenty twenty-six makes it a little bit challenging for us budget-wise. Um, because more than likely deposits would have to be made out of the FY twenty-six budget and final payments would be made out of the FY twenty-seven budget. And those, we have absolutely no idea what we're talking about in terms of that celebration. Um, we'd be looking to put essentially a placeholder in the budget, so the ten thousand dollars right now, uh, to support that effort, uh, to support their effort and also, of course, support the celebration itself.
I personally would like to see that fleshed out much better than what we just threw in a row.
Yeah.
And I think also the best way of dealing with it would be through deliberative session to add to the budget. Now, would we have to come into open session and order a vote on it?
So we'll, we'll have a deliberative session one where the, uh, there were required to.
No, I understand that, but, um, if we allocate, let's say, fifteen thousand dollars at deliberative session to modify the budget, would that have to be discussed at open meeting?
Yes.
Oh, that's a consideration.
If, if you were, it, it, I would say that if you were interested in having the discussion, deliberative session, rather than making amendments to the operating budget at deliberative session, I would suggest having a warrant article in the warrant ahead of time. So something we could add in after tonight that would seek to raise amount of money that could then be discussed.
And we would have to decide upon that tonight, no?
No, you wouldn't have to decide upon that tonight.
Okay, but again, I think it's in their ballpark to make a reasonable suggestion, not, not just simply throw a number out there. Unless you think.
Or just raise it up to X dollars, yeah, and have a little more flexibility that way. Didn't you also mention that there are some other alternative revenue sources that we're making, that tends to come like that?
So we have a. Yeah, we have a couple of small trust funds that we could use for the purpose, um, that would, that would certainly support, um, some, if not all of what they're asking for. We do have patriotic purposes already in the budget, so it's possible that, you know, we could, if it looked like we were going to save some money in other areas, we would be able to spend a little bit more out of patriotic purposes.
And does some of that patriotic purposes that we're going to afford in July, or is that just for the.
Memorial Day Veterans Day, correct. And each of those costs roughly five thousand dollars, so.
So your suggestion is to draft a warrant article that's saying this, as Rick has mentioned, um, maybe up to ten thousand dollars?
Well, my suggestion is to go either way. If you, if you don't want to support ten thousand dollars in the operating budget, you know, which I understand based on, you know, it's kind of a grasping that number out of the air, um, then, and would think to amend it at deliberative session, rather than amending the entire operating budget at deliberative session. Let's look at just, us, you know, putting a placeholder warrant article that we would discuss separately at deliberative session.
And that will give us an opportunity then to kind of think it through.
Not really, as long as it's a warrant, it's a warrant, right, like.
Well, to set.
You can't, you can't zero out the warrant.
You can, you can reduce it, you can reduce it down to a dollar if you want to.
I'd rather see something on the ballot that people vote on that.
Yeah, as you could imagine, as a warrant, as a right. Advertising to the, to the community that, uh, to do this sort of thing.
Now, um, if, if it's under ten thousand, we wouldn't have to discuss that. Wait, what's, what's the, I should know this by now. The monetary limit for open session discussion?
You can, you can, you can discuss any, there's a, there is.
Over bonding.
There, for bonding is required to go to open session, but you, you can put this warrant applying where you want, whether you want on a ballot or a.
Yeah, rather see it on a ballot. People decide because then it's truly.
Mr. Ball.
Right.
Okay, so we, uh, I don't know, we need a motion, but, uh, we'll draft something.
Yep, you have instructed me to draft a special warrant article for the purchase.
It doesn't necessarily have to specify the Manok Center, it's just.
No, it'll be just for, right, and then we'll figure out, we'll figure out at some point what makes.
Right, so maybe vendors pay directly out of that then?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Moving on. As usual, we spent twenty minutes talking about ten thousand bucks.
Well, when you have a budget that's eleven and a half thousand under, which is a rarity, I've never occurred that before. Let's get Bush.
Let's spend it right away.
Alright, so, not to, as much as I love that we're down eleven thousand dollars on the operating, the reality is we're still talking about a net raise in tax, to taxation of ten million, five hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars, which is not insignificant. Um, being that five hundred and fifty-one thousand and change, of course, has to do with the, the debt service for the fire station bond. Um, we also have the other, uh, the enterprise funds, um, water and sewer, those are, of course, all raised by fees, so there's no impact on taxation there. And the pay is zero, a special revenue, is, is, pay is zero, a special revenue fund, um, which is raised from the sale of the blue bags. Um, we're expecting that that's going to be down from last year, but again, those are not taxpayer funds. Um, though additional taxpayer dollars have been raised to help support that program, or would be raised if the budget passes. Then we'll get into the special warrant articles, um, the police fleet is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, Public Works fleet, three hundred thousand, uh, roadways, uh, maintenance and reconstruction, four hundred thousand, British Culverts and Dams, another four hundred thousand, Adams Pool is thirty-five thousand, ambulance, ambulance equipment is three hundred and thirty-five thousand, um, you'll, when you look at the warrant, you'll see that that is coming, or that money is going to be earmarked to go into the ambulance revolving fund. Um, not a capital reserve fund, but it's for a capital purpose. And then we had the same, moving the, uh, TIP, the TIP funds from their escrow accounts where we collect them over the course of the entire year into each of those expendable trust funds, so there's no additional tax dollars being raised there. And that if all the articles were to pass, Articles Three through Article currently thirteen, uh, we'd be looking at raising an appropriate twelve million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars.
What's the percent increase as compared with last year?
I did not do that math. Did you do that math? No.
What we had last year was only eleven million, three hundred sixty-four thousand. Does that match yours?
No.
No, sorry, mine's.
While Lily is, um, working on that number, did you have any questions about the draft warrant?
Yes, what's wrong with Bass Road?
So that is a, I knew that was going to come up, but that is a request from the residents of Bass Road. Um, they're, they have been for many years and understandable is concerned about traffic, turning off the, using, uh, Bass Road as a cut through from Route one oh one to one twenty-three. And the speeds, um, as they come up, particularly off of Route one oh one, far exceed the thirty-five mile an hour posted speed limit there. Bass Road is a unpaved road that goes from one oh one, uh, Route one oh one Wilton Road to, uh, Route one twenty-three, which goes to Sharon and then. So it just cuts through there. Yeah, it is a really nice road.
Where is it showing up here?
So that's, uh, Article fifteen, and it's really, it's a place, I don't have wording, I don't have verbiage for that yet, I'm working with town attorney to figure out exactly what it needs to say, so.
So this is a petition warrant article?
It's not exactly a petition, they, they made a request and, uh, both Public Works and the Police Department supported to make that road either, see the close at one end or make it subject to gates and bars.
It's a private road?
If it's not a private road, it's a town road, which is why the town would have to act on it.
Are there not enough potholes in that?
It, it is a gravel road, so there's plenty of potholes.
Are we saying that everybody in town can't use a road that everybody in town pays the main man?
Well, so that's. Well, so that's, this would certainly reduce the maintenance costs if you're able to slow down and remove the non-resident traffic from that road. There would be a hot, awful lot less work to do there.
Well, have they expressed any interest in taking that back to a private road?
No, they have not.
Because I could insult that.
Yeah, they, they petitioned to close that one end of the road. So we do have a petition-
Do they close 101 or 123?
At the 101 end, yeah.
That means they won't be able to leave that way.
Correct, yeah. That's from the tax rate setting.
Oh, perfect. Can we even live on Bass Road? Just the Basses?
No. I mean, they're relative.
Yeah.
It's, it's very much a family, a family group out there. Yeah, there's not a lot.
Doesn't have as many?
Yeah.
Or one, two, two properties?
Does our department have any issue with that?
Open one?
No.
I mean, we, we would need to put a turnaround in at some point for all the vehicles that we do have out there, so that we would be able to turn them around, but that, that doesn't seem to be an issue for any of the residents, making sure that the town has that kind of access, so.
I'd really like to see a dollar figure. What would the town say, if it was for coming down our budget?
I'm really not sure. I think this is really more just a, you know, this is a petition that came to us actually last year, shortly before town meeting, and it's too late to act on it. So we held on to it until now. We're trying to get the language drafted up before giving the board to look at because we really didn't know what, what a warrant article would need to say before we considered it, so. But hoping to have that before tonight, before tomorrow, don't.
Is there certain being done on the number of cars that DVS? We have a sense of that.
No, we haven't put any effort into, into doing that calculation. We, we would have to have the, put that there and someone doing that work.
I do kind of feel like if it's a town road that the taxpayers are paying for, then it should be a useful road, like, I don't really get, maybe we can do some kind of traffic, traffic calming measure, like put one of those speed things up there.
It is a parent road. I hear you, but the other part is we got plenty of dead end roads also in town, so.
They're dead end roads that were built to be dead end roads, right?
Also true.
Not all of them. Many of them have been discontinued over the years. Clubby Scott Roads won, General Mill Road in between, the dead ends at either end. Then there's, uh, off of Four Winds Farm right there, Cornish. So there's a number that over the years have been closed, either closed, discontinued or set closed subject to gates and bars and reduced to what's called a Class VI highway. Those are, those seasonal roads or pass at your own risk type of roads, so.
Just another observation.
Yep.
The stress on exiting 101 on 1.3 at the light is significant.
Yes.
And any and all traffic now will have to try to navigate that to the Bass Road exit, which is a lot more forgiving, um, both ways.
I was going to mention that too, you know, that didn't DOT say that that intersection was one of the most, it must be most dangerous in the state of the country.
Right.
And they have done some traffic calming measures, but this is, as you say, an alternative route, something coming down 101 to go to their house. Maybe they live on the border there.
We can't vote on something that isn't even written yet, right?
No, that's correct. So it's, it's really, yeah, and as soon as we have some language, it'll sound-
I'm, I'm woe to, to take any action without some evidence.
You want to talk about?
And-
Right.
You're talking about some kind of report.
Yeah. I'd like to monitor that. I mean, people, it's like on Summer Street and, or not Summer, Union Street, you know, they're all arms all the time about people speeding.
Right, so. Okay, but we don't have anything really to discuss, so why, why do we discuss?
Well, similar objections.
Right.
Right, it sounds like a recent objection, seems to be on the one.
Yeah, we don't even know.
Okay, so back to the, the last question. So last year, the raise to appropriate number was $10,551,116. So that's an increase of $1,638,256, or 15.5%.
15.5?
Yes.
The caveat is that that number includes the fund balance that we're going to use.
Correct.
That, that's the amount that we've raised in taxation.
In taxation. So this comes from tax rate setting, so this is after town meeting, after the fund balance was appropriated by the select board, but this is the amount in tax bills that we actually sent out. So this is why we always give that, you know, that kind of, yes, can we do a crystal ball and imagine what we're going to raise in taxes? Sure, but it's probably going to be wrong. And so this is, you know, a really good example of why that can often be wrong.
And not that 1 million, 1.6 million could be offset with fund balance again at the end of the-
Correct.
But most of the, right, most of that 1.6 million dollar difference is-
It's something I'm missing about it, yes.
Well, you, how much?
Wasn't there a warrant article about the first payment on the fire station last year?
Yes.
So would that warrant article be subtracted from the addition of $950,000?
No. So this is, this is-
Because we're really only asking for $300,000 more than last year.
Last year was, it's 500, we're asking for $550,000 more than last year.
Last year was 350,000.
Right, was the warrant article, correct. Yeah. And then there was all the other capital reserve funds, so there's a difference in all of those amounts that we're raising or not raising, depending on which fund we're talking about this year.
I don't understand how it's a-
And then there's the, well, it's 1.6 million dollars because you also used $7 million in fund balance. Correct. So 600, which is not far off from what we're already talking about, the 551,000.
Yeah. But we, I remember that time when I, when, at a meeting last year, I said we shouldn't use all of our fund balance to save $21,000 a year, and now we have a million dollars less in fund balance to use again. Remember that part, everybody? We'll use it anyways. Now it's gone.
You could just mention last year's numbers, I'm sorry, miss that.
Sure. So last year, what we, what we sent out in tax bills last year for Justin Minus, and this was last fall, is $10,551,116.
And that's what we're comparing to, the $12,189,000.
Right. So we're really comparing apples and pears, not apples and apples. It's, it's a bit different.
Well, how's David supposed to compare it to the paper?
I'm sure David's going to call me tomorrow.
Isn't that what, what he's got to be?
Yeah. Yeah. That would be a apples and apples comparison.
So this is subtracted out the million, the million that went from balance.
Yep, so-
The bills one is cut to 8,000, just probably more apples to apples.
Correct. So if you take that fund, the amount that the selectmen used in fund balance to reduce the amount needed to erase the taxation, that gets you really down to that, that difference. Okay?
Did they write it all?
No, can I question?
Did they write it all?
No, can I question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, David, it's like since then? Yeah.
I had a question on Article Three.
Mm-hmm.
It's a decent question. I'm trying to understand why we put in that warrant article, um, is it close to that point, having their, um, subject to taxation? And items that I pay for, uh, users, that is to say, why do we mix water and sewer with the general budget in this article? So it'd be raised all kinds of costs in the ground. How, what, how high the budget is, the budget isn't as high. I mean, it's $2 or $3 million less, and the $2 or $3 million doesn't come from the taxpayers. Just because it's required by the IRS?
That's my pithy answer, yes. That's my pithy answer, state law said so. But there's a really good, good reason behind that, so you, if, if, for instance, for some reason we weren't be, we weren't able to raise all these or fees, we would still have to pay for the water and sewer utilities. And so there is some, there is some onus on, on the general taxpayer there. But I, it's hard to imagine a situation where that would happen. Also, even harder to imagine a situation where DRA would allow us to do that. So it's really, again, back to my pithy answer, because state law said so.
Does state law say that you can't articulate what David just pointed out with them, if this first article, saying this includes 2 billion, whatever numbers?
So that's why I always, you know, when, when we do the budget public hearing and when we go deliberative session, I always really try to hammer home that this is the total gross budgeted amount for operations, that this does not include any of the fees or, you know, any other thing, any grants we might receive or anything along those lines that goes to offset those tax dollars.
But including revenue.
Yeah, including general revenue, right, absolutely, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Are we going through each one or are we just going to vote on each one?
It's up to you. We're not going to vote on them tonight. This is not the final draft of the warrant at this point, so, well, I wanted you to get a chance to look at them before the public hearing, so if you have any questions or if we, you know, need to make any changes, we'll do that before the public hearing.
Can I just debate a question?
Uh, I have a-
March 4th, is that something?
Yes, March 4th.
It is.
Yep.
And is that out here or is that on?
Here, yeah. In this room.
Just refresh your memory with what that entails that evening, to basically just go through it again?
Yeah, so we'll go through a, I'll do a synopsis of the, of the operating budget and the other one, the other funds, and talk about, you know, any of the significant changes, not just the more familiar I did tonight, just a little bit more detail. All the directors will be here in case members of the public have questions for them on their specific budgets, or if you have any questions that come to you in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll go from there. And then we'll ask the select board and to vote on every article that's on the warrant, whether they vote to support or not support, and or recommend or not recommend, and then we'll ask the budget committee to do the same, but only for those items that have a dollar attached to them.
Is Article 15, half of the year this year?
The, the residents of Bass Road have asked that it be in this year, so they have a petition.
It will be a courtesy more requirement, but it's going to be law.
So the way that it was submitted so far, it's, it would effectively be a courtesy on the select board, however, if they were to resubmit it within the, the time period and then have that reviewed by the town clerk's office, or by the, sorry, by the surprise of the checklist in the town clerk's office, then, you know, it would go right onto the warrant.
Deadline for that?
For petitions, um-
Shouldn't they be submitting this, not?
They did. They submitted a petition to, to my office, but it's not, it, it was a petition with, that was signed by all the residents of Bass Road, not 25 people, 25, 25 registered voters of the town of Peterborough that was submitted to, to us during that process. So we're acting on it, you know, effectively out of good faith, you know, we, we want to see what would be involved in it. We consider cost, the cost to do the closing would be minimal. You know, after talking to Chief Nard, we could certainly see the benefit to the folks that live on that street. There are concerns that, you know, the, the people who drive through there are not respectful of it being a dirt road, of there being families and children that live on that road, you know, and concerns for that safety, so. And, and it's a narrow road, you know, it is a gravel road, so it's, it's really not meant for that kind of traffic that that road has typically seen, so.
We're not aware of any petition articles at this point in time, are we?
Not any others, but it's still early, so.
So first week of March, right? Is the deadline?
So deadline is March 11th, so there's still quite a bit of time.
I suppose, because it's 40. Any other comments or concerns about, what you already talked about? Couple of questions about what I just said.
Mm-hmm.
I guess you have.
No.
Does that assume that the plan, that that price is for the new segment?
Yes.
And if, I just think it's dependent on sales, if sales don't reach that level, how is the shortfall?
Um, it'll have to come out of whatever's budgeted in the Select One Center's budget, operating budget, as it did this year.
And do we know approximately how much of a shortfall we plan for this year?
Uh, well, this year's not over yet, so, but it's significant.
$90,000?
Yeah, it's significant.
Yours, do you think we're here on like?
$90,000, never short.
Current, yeah. But we have to, they can make that up.
Sure, pricing the rest.
I already stopped, so we're pricing it.
So we had the biggest budget increase in the, the history of town, and we're coming up short, so there's not going to be any fund balance returns, is that what we're saying?
It'll not be much smaller, uh, the return, just as we tighten budgets and tighten budgets and, uh, use experience as our guide, analytics for the cost of salaries and benefits and commodities, uh, the, the amount that we're raising and appropriating is much closer to what we are spending, so this year could be less of a balance every year.
Ah, so to offset that increase, we'll have no fund balance.
For the minimums.
So, let me reiterate my point from before about when I said we shouldn't use that amount of.
Anything else?
Would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
So I was just thinking about, if I entertain a motion to adjourn, I am. Mary, please, at least two seconds. All those in favor?